Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order, the West Covina City Council meeting of Tuesday, July 5th. Welcome to everybody. We will start with our invocation by City Manager Andrew Pazmat, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance from Councilwoman Karen Armbrust. Please rise.
Gracious God, you are always deserving of praise. You are a rock, our strength and our might. Teach us to walk in modesty, purity and faithfulness, and shelter us from sin. Through your Holy Spirit, help us to retain our integrity in all that we do, so we may bring honor to you in word and deed. We ask that you bring your peace to those who are troubled, distressed, and seek your comfort. Guide our leaders each day and help them to make the difficult decisions. May heaven and earth declare your glory and honor forever. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, oral call.
Mayor/Chairman Herrford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chairman Toohey.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Armbrust here. Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Councilwoman Sanderson is due to be here, so we anticipate her any moment. We'll record her when she shows. City Attorney, report out from closed session.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The record should reflect that the City Council and the Council, as the Community Development Commission convened this evening for closed session items, that prior to recessing into closed session, the items that were listed on the agenda were announced for discussion in closed session. That all members were present, with the exception of Councilmember and Commissioner Member Sanderson. And the following is my report. With respect to the items under Conference of Labor Negotiators, those items were discussed with the City Council. There was no action taken, final action taken that needs to be reported, and there's nothing further to report. Conference of Legal Counsel, existing litigation, the City Council was briefed by special counsel on this matter. There was no final action taken with respect to resolution of this matter, and there's nothing further to report. On items, the items involving the Foothill Transit, the Green and Clean Express Car Wash, and the properties located at 1435 West Puente and 11811 South Sunset, all those items were presented to the Commission. Those items were discussed, but there was no final action taken and nothing to report. Lastly, the property located at 1350 East San Bernardino Road, negotiating parties Thomas Safran and Associates. The record should reflect that the City, I'm sorry, the CDC authorized the approval of a settlement agreement amendment to the regulatory agreement with Lark Allen Limited Partnership, and authorized the mayor and chairman to execute that agreement. That is my report, Mr. Mayor. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On item three, the Traffic Committee report, you have before you a correction sheet to a typo that's on item two, the staff report recommendation. It incorrectly showed Virginia, and it should be Merced Avenue. So it's corrected in both the heading and in the recommendation, heading of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I should note, one item that I failed to state was that the closed session items, the special meeting, was recessed and not adjourned at this time. So this matter still stays open in the event that there's any further need to discuss labor matters.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have no presentations tonight, so next item on the agenda is oral communication. This is the time when the public can speak on any matter within the purview of the City Council. We have some yellow cards. If you'd fill out a yellow card, and please come forward when I call your name. First speaker tonight is Lloyd Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Herrford and Councilmembers. Tonight I'm speaking on item 12. What I'd like to say tonight is that I'm here in support of this item, as long as it includes everyone from the top to the bottom. Our city is in a financial problem, and we need to take every step to stop the depletion of the general fund. With the way the economy is right now, we can't even see the bottom of this downfall. I know this council would do what is in best interest for our city and its residents. The burden has to be shared by everyone. You can't expect one set of employees to bear the burden. It's not their fault for the condition that our city is in. Just be fair. No one wants to take a pay cut. I do understand how they feel, but everyone must understand, if we do nothing, we will only get worse. So good luck, and I hope we do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia DeZaya, DeZara.
Okay, Mayor Herrford and members of the West Covina City Council. I'm before you at this meeting as the President of the West Covina Confidential Exempt Employees Association, and a member of the negotiating team for our group. We fully understand the financial situation West Covina is facing, and through the negotiation process the last few years, have tried to be a part of the solution and help you fix the budget problems. Yes, we want to be part of the solution. However, we don't want to be the only solution. On June 21st, we voted to reject the city's best, last and final offer, not because we don't want to help the city meet its financial goals, but because we want to be treated fairly in the negotiation process. The staff report addressing this matter before you tonight outlines the areas of impasse for each group. To clarify our position, we also asked for a Me Too clause during the negotiations. The Me Too clause we requested could have changed the outcome of that vote to a positive I'm sorry. Because the Me Too would have been an acknowledgement from you that we've been trying to help the city out of their financial crisis. Without the Me Too clause, we have no assurance that other groups will pay at least 8% of their purse contribution, which is the same amount we will be paying. As you know, we've taken pay cuts, and those pay cuts have severely impacted our income and ability to provide for our families. Picking up the 8% purse contribution will also have a negative impact on our ability to provide for our families, but we understand that it's a necessary step toward keeping West Covina solvent. We are requesting that every employee group or association be asked to pay their own purse contribution, which is the same thing that miscellaneous employees have been asked to do. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Ed Hidalgo.
Good evening, Council and City Manager. I stand here representing our association, as I did last year at this time. Although we didn't accept your last and final offer this year, it's not because we do not understand where the city is during these hard economic times, but it's realizing the fairness of giving by all labor groups that are employed by the city. The city has extended police and fire contracts up to this point in which they have not taken salary reductions. We have offered to extend our current contract one year, in which we are helping the city in taking a salary reduction for the third straight year. In talking with the leaders from the four other labor groups that are also in contract talks this year, they also agreed that a contract extension would be the right thing to do. These five labor groups understand their contribution to helping the city out. In July and December of this year, the city will be giving out salary increases to other labor groups that make up 80% of the budget. Asking us to make more reductions, again, is just not right. We continue to take the punishment as if our groups are the federal government bailing out the city, as if you guys were car manufacturers. I ask you, as leaders of this city, to realize the impact in your decision will bring tonight if you decide to impose your last and final offer to these groups. Your employees who work hard and that are understaffed, how not only the residents of the city, but you as well, when called upon, are wondering if you, as city leaders, do care about them. We ask that you send your management staff back to the table and extend the current contracts for one more year for the five labor groups. The fact that all five groups in their vote said no to the city's last and final offer was a statement to you as leaders that enough was enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just a couple little quick comments. It's nice to see that this body does the pledge, because there's a school board. Steve Cox, he doesn't like doing it, and throws a fit when people remind him. You know, so it's nice to see that you guys still respect our country. Speaking of that, one of the reasons I wanted to talk is that the respect that's shown to the employees in general, especially our police. The topic was brought up about the school district, because they have some nice reserves right now, actually paying for the SRO officer at the high school. And Eileen Miranda Jimenez, who sits on the school board and has from time to time announced the idea that she might be running for city council, said, "We can spend the money on security guards instead of police. They do just as good of a job." Which I thought was rather insulting to, you know, our fine people who went through a lot of training to become police and continue to take a lot of training and time and energy to do that. So I just thought you should know that there are people in the city who don't respect the job that city employees do, especially our police, you know, from that standpoint. No insult to security guards, but you know, I know when I was a kid in high school, when an officer was around and you saw that badge, you straightened up real fast, simply because of the legal authority that they have. And the people who have been the SRO at the high school over the years, some have moved up quite well within the department to show that the quality that they are, you know, that they have there. And I think it's always been a very good thing for our city, but unfortunately, there's some people on the school board who, for other reasons than concerning themselves with the safety of the children, or the students at that school, want to make political statements instead of doing what's right. You know, everybody understands that you guys are doing what you can. You only have a certain limited amount of money, and it would be just the opposite if you had $20 million in the bank. You'd probably be saying, "We'd pay for it." You know, when you did have $20 million in the bank, you were paying for it all. You know, so unfortunately, there's those who don't want to do it. So just thought you'd like to know, and I thought maybe our officers would like to know that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor Al Mansour.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Chancellor Al Mansour, the Executive Director of the Housing Rights Center. We are the fair housing organization that provides services for the city and for the residents of West Covina, for people who have fair housing needs. Although probably about 82% of our callers, it's general landlord tenant questions that they have, and then we investigate to see whether or not there's a fair housing violation. And I'm here tonight to ask for full funding, as per our request, under the application for community development block grants. The, as you know, HUD is the one who funds community development block grants to cities and counties and municipalities. And one of the main requirements under the community development block grant program is that you, as the city receiving it, has to affirmatively further fair housing. It's actually one of the few specific requirements when one does receive community development block grants that you have to do. And that's the reason why the city of West Covina supports and contracts with the Housing Rights Center, so that your residents can receive those services, and so that fair housing is affirmatively furthered. About 92% of our callers are extremely low and low-income residents of the city of West Covina, and it's a very ethnically and racially diverse group of people who contact us for our services as well. Already 15,000 is significant, but already, we're already subsidizing the program by about $1,200 a year, meaning that the service, our cost to provide the services, we have to kind of put in about $1,200 more to pay for salaries and benefits and rent and so forth. So thank you very much for this opportunity. I am here also to answer any questions if you do happen to have about fair housing services, but I definitely want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to present this to you and to talk about how important it is to stop housing discrimination in West Covina. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Not familiar, well, I am sort of familiar with Merced, but I see here on the agenda that there is a recommendation to reduce the speed on Merced from Azusa east up to Hollenbeck. But I'm much more familiar with Cameron and Lark Allen, and having lived there now for 11 years, I've seen a number of accidents. Just recently, during graduation, his last graduation, there was a major accident there. Thank God no one was hurt, other than the drivers. And I'm wondering why the recommendation for Merced and not Lark Allen and Cameron. I'm out there quite often watering or whatnot, and cars go past me at 60 miles an hour. And I know it's not posted to be driven at 60 miles an hour, but it is so. And I think the city either has to enforce the law or reduce the speed limit. I also see that the differences between Merced and Cameron, where I live, is that adjacent to my home, there's an elementary. Adjacent to the elementary, there's a Cameron Park. There's a park, a public park called Cameron. And adjacent to the park, right across the street, there's the high school. And I've seen so many accidents that I know sooner or later, we're going to see a death result as a cause of the high speed that takes place on Cameron heading towards South Hills. The idea of reducing speed into South Hills, I'll be very honest with you, doesn't sit well with me. It seems like there's a preference in that direction than there is out where we live. And that may sound like I'm playing some sort of card here, but I'm not. It's just an obvious truth. And now I read that we're going to reduce traffic to 25, or there's a recommendation to reduce traffic to 25 miles an hour from Azusa, east of Azusa, to Hollenbeck, where most of the traffic exists on Cameron and Lark Allen. And I think statistically, it could be proven that the majority of the accidents are occurring on that very corner, Lark Allen and Cameron. I ask council to please look at this, or ask city staff to look at how to improve the situation on that corner. It's a three-way signal that doesn't seem to have improved the situation. From prior testimony from one of your city managers, that corner has been historically a problem for the city. It continues to be. I ask that you please look at it before someone is tragically and fatally killed. Thank you.
Yeah, let me respond, and I'll have our city engineer respond. First off, these are all regulated by state regulations. They have to meet certain warrants. This one was city-initiated. Mr. Yahtzee, can you let us know why this would be reduced, and if we can, look at other streets?
Yes, thank you. And we can definitely look at this intersection or any intersection that a resident has a concern about. The section on Merced on the agenda tonight is two lanes, one in each direction, because of its width and its distance, it meets the state requirements to be classified as 25 miles an hour. Four-lane arterials would not meet that definition, would need other traffic studies done to determine the speed limits. But we can definitely look at that.
Okay, Councilmember Toohey.
I don't mind if we could add that to the Traffic Committee report, what Mr. DeRoux is talking about, number one and number two. This, so everyone knows, Merced, Glen Allen from Azusa, that is West Covina Unified, not South Hills. Hollencrest Middle School is there, and that feeds West Covina High School there. It's over between Vine and Merced, feed Hollencrest. So I just want to make sure of that, but I have no problem with going ahead and addressing that and having the Traffic Committee look at that area, because there's no question, I've seen Mr. DeRoux there before, and I know there's traffic out there.
Councilwoman Lane.
Yeah, and if I could ask the city manager, if you could have the police chief maybe look at it, maybe we need to up the patrols over there, because I know I live on Cameron too, and that's a busy street by the other high school. So I know it's really dangerous around there, and so if the police chief could look at that, and maybe we can make sure that the kids and everybody are going the proper speeds and people.
Okay, that concludes oral communications. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar council would like to have removed?
The Traffic Committee issue we brought up, does that have been brought up differently, or can we just go ahead and request that separately?
You just make the motion with the changes as presented, unless you want to pull that separately.
No, no, I'm talking about adding Cameron, Lark Allen.
Oh, I see. I'll do that. If there's no other items to be pulled, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar with the recommendation for the council to have the city take a look at Lark Allen and Cameron, and then also Cameron, I guess, all the way down to see if we, or actually have police enforcement increase. We have a motion, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay, we move to public hearings. Item nine, this is a public hearing. Matter set for public hearing is for authorizing the collection of annual sewer service charge through the county tax bill and for the setting of the rates. City Clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
This time I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Citywide Sewer Service Charge. There will first be a presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. City Manager, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Yahtzee will do that report.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor Herrford, members of the City Council. Tonight's hearing will set the rate and also approve collection of the sewer assessment on the property tax bills. This fund pays for the maintenance of the sewers system, the compliance with state and federal Clean Water Act laws, street sweeping, and it also should provide reserves for future sewers replacements and repairs. Over 25,000 notices were mailed out to West Covina Properties. Staff received only seven responses. Out of those, five were opposed, and two were not opposed to this increase. This year, staff is recommending a 4% increase, which equates to about an increase of 16 cents a month per dwelling unit. There's also options and attachments in your staff report that show an option for a 3% increase, and that indicates that the reserves would not be built up, but would be depleted by the year 2016. Also, there's an option there that shows a 10-year outlook for no increases, and in that case, the reserves are actually depleted in the year 2013. And the reserves are necessary both to cover cash flow and to provide for future repairs and maintenance and replacements as our sewer system grows older. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
Any questions from the council?
I have one.
Councilwoman Lane.
Yeah, I just had a question. You know, I've seen in other cities, I think it's LA, that we put screening, or they put screening over the collection areas, so that no debris goes into the storm drains. Is that something that we're going to have to do in the future, or?
Yeah, that's something we're actually looking at purchasing right now, and we're going to do a pilot program. We're going to probably start at a couple locations where there is trash or adjacently, adjacent next to the wash, probably West Covina Parkway, and you'll probably see those going in soon.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Madam City Clerk, have you received any written protests regarding the citywide sewer service charge?
There are seven written communications. As Mr. Yahtzee stated, five were in opposition and two were in support.
At this time, we will open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in either favor or opposition? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. I'll ask for councilmember comments. Any comments? We have a motion. A motion is in order to adopt the resolution. Do we need the resolution read on this one? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Lane. I'll second the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 10 is the fiscal year 2011-2012 Community Development Block Grant, Public Services Project Funding. This matter is set for public hearing. Is the fiscal year 2011-2012 Public Community Development Block Grant, Public Service Project Funding. City Clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
Okay, at this time, I shall open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2011-2012 Community Development Block Grant, Public Service Funding. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. Mr. Pazmat, who will present the staff report?
Mr. McDonald will do that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This public hearing concerns the funding for the 2011-2012 CDBG funding for public services. The city receives an annual grant of CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and one of the eligible uses of that funding is to fund public services. The, as part of its approved 1112 CDBG action plan, the city stated its intent to fund public services to the maximum allowable level. The, for 1112, staff estimates a total available resources in the amount of $192,296. A notice of funding availability was published in February. 14 funding applications were received, with requests totaling nearly $280,000. This exceeds the estimated resources by approximately $88,000. And late May commenced the evaluation process through our commissions, the Community Services Commission, the Senior Citizens Commissions, and there are funding recommendations shown in attachment number one. The city administered programs designated with an asterisk. Two of the proposals were not recommended for funding for reasons detailed in the report. Narrative descriptions of the projects are included in attachment number two. Passed in proposed performance are shown in attachment number three. A special meeting in June, the Community Services Commission approved the recommendation for funding in column F of attachment one. In May, the, I'm sorry, in June, the Senior Citizens Commission approved the recommendation in column G, and the staff recommendation is shown in column H. Now, staff recommendation seeks to maintain status quo funding for the city-administered projects to offset city program expenses that would otherwise be supported by the general fund. A decrease in CDBG funding for these programs would result in an increased burden in the general fund in order to maintain the current service levels. Staff also recommends status quo funding for the Housing Rights Center, since, as was pointed out earlier, that it is a program that HUD requires of its grantees. And ultimately, the staff recommendation seeks to address the comprehensive needs of individuals by funding both internal and external projects to develop a continuum of service that addresses the needs of seniors, youth, crime victims, and the homeless and those in need. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council allocate $192,296 in CDBG funds to the public service projects as outlined in attachment number one, column H, and authorize the necessary appropriations. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Any questions by the council? Okay, seeing none, we will now move on to the public testimony portion of the public hearing. At this time, we'll open up the public testimony portion. Is anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Ask for council discussion. Councilmember Toohey.
Yes, this is another one of those things, like I've been talking about for the last couple council meetings. We had a cut from the federal government, in this case, of $213,960, or a 16.6% cut to our allocation that we normally have received in the past, and it's made us have to tighten our belt even more. Again, no doing on our part. We got a 16% pay cut, a 16.6% allocation for these programs that many are very, all of them are very worthwhile. I will go ahead and support the staff recommendation as presented for funding levels as represented in the report on attachment one.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Toohey, second by Lane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay, move on to item 11. This is the time that has been set aside for the discussion of agenda item number 11, the meet and confer impasse between the Midmanagement, Confidential, and Maintenance and Crafts Employees Association. There will first be the presentation of the staff report. At the conclusion of the staff report, the labor representative from the Midmanagement, Confidential, or the Maintenance and Craft Employees Association will be able to present any additional pertinent information for the City Council's consideration. At the conclusion of any additional comments, city staff will have the opportunity to respond to the additional information presented by the Three Labor Association. Mr. Pazmat, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Baughan will do that report.
Okay, thank you. Even though the economy is slowly turning around, our costs are increasing over the next three years, mostly in the area of pensions. In the case of the miscellaneous employees, pension costs are In the case of the miscellaneous employees, pension costs are projected to increase by 10 percent of pay over that period of time. That translates into $1.4 million per year by the time of the third year comes rolling around. These rising costs will continue, will lead us to continuing budget deficits as revenues can't keep up with the pace of a rising cost. These growing deficits will also result in lower staffing levels and reduced services. In an effort to mitigate the impact on services in the community, the city focused its negotiations on ways to offset rising pension costs, controlling employee leave programs and discontinuing the furloughs, and limiting programs that caused administrative burdens on an already reduced staff. While attempting to address the city's short-term cash flow issues, the goal of negotiations was also to implement some long-term strategies that address some of the structural issues contained in the city's budget while preserving employee jobs and benefits to the extent possible. You know, a good example of the precarious nature of the city's budget and the continuing challenges that we face, no sooner did the city adopt a budget that contained a $1.8 million deficit, which was down from $7.3 million and also included $625,000 in employee concession, and the state comes down and takes away an additional $400,000 from us in the form of our remaining VLF revenues. So, we've already seen, you know, the size of the deficit be increased by virtue of state action. With, this is the backdrop of negotiations. The city has been negotiating with the five miscellaneous groups for the last four months. The main goal of the city's negotiations was to have the employees pay the eight percent employee pension contribution. During negotiation, the city added a number of items to the proposals to try to soften the blow of the concessions that the city was seeking. There was increase in the flexibility to buy back vacation hours for those groups that have the ability to do so, and we staggered the implementation of the pension contributions for the groups that do not have the vacation buyback option. We also pushed back some of the implementation dates on modifications to the leave plan. And finally, the city offered 30 hours of leave time to the employees over the holidays in consideration for the concessions that they're being requested of. While the city had tentative agreement on a number of items with the units, they could not come to agreement with, on certain other ones. Ultimately, the city presented all five units with its last best and final offers, which were then rejected by all five units. The city then declared impasse in the negotiations. The three units being discussed tonight, Midmanagement, Confidential, and Maintenance and Craft, also sent a letter indicating that they believed they were at impasse in the negotiations. And specific areas of impasse in the various groups revolved around the retirement contributions that the city was seeking the employees to pay, either ranging from, you know, not paying what the city was seeking to paying nothing to one group asking for an additional 40 hours of compensation. We had discussed some changes to the PARZ EPMC plan. The groups ultimately wanted those either left unchanged or switching over that plan to, switching over the funding for that plan into the R, the Retirement Health Savings Plan. There's a provision lump sum leave payout. The groups wanted that the same as what the purse contribution, since that's somewhat, it's indirectly but tied to the purse contribution. Additional things that we couldn't agree on were increases to the RHS plan, ride share same level as public safety. The city sought to eliminate that program and redirect those dollars, and reopeners' language if legislation affects employees' salary benefits. While these are the specific items of what the cities did not agree on, the main issue of impasse is related equity and having all employees share in the burden of compensation reductions to help address the city's budget deficit. The three units here tonight all have a very good understanding of the financial challenges facing the city, and they've all expressed a willingness to be part of the solution. In fact, they've been part of the solution for the last two years by taking pay cuts during that time. The issue now is that employers are being asked for the third consecutive year to take compensation reductions while public safety units are receiving raises and benefit increases. The miscellaneous units are aware that the public safety contracts do expire in June of 2012 and have asked for a me-too clause with the public safety units so that all employees in the city are sharing the same burden of the equally, equally of the rising pension costs. The city's response to that request was that with a one-year contract, this was a me-too request that would fall outside the contract term and was an equity issue that would be better addressed next year when all units are up for negotiations. The final point, major point for the units, was that there was no layoff or furloughs be guaranteed for the term of the MOU. That summarizes, you know, the city's assessment of the negotiation process. We are recommending that the city impose the last best and final offer that's been presented, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions of council members? From council members? Okay, seeing none. I would like to now invite up the representative from the Midmanagement, Confidential, or Maintenance and Crafts Employees Association, who would, we would like to present additional information. It's Mr. John Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the City Council, appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I think Mr. Bachman's summary of the negotiations we concur with to the largest degree. There are some differences of interpretation as to exactly what was and was not agreed to or issues of impasse. However, they are all minor concerns. From the onset of this negotiation, as well as the past two years, we have not had an economic dispute with the city. The employees agreeing to compensation reductions to help address the budget deficit was seen by them as a responsible position to take, and beyond just taking the position, the leadership of these associations encouraged their members to understand the need to continue to do more with less to maintain the quality of services that this community has grown accustomed to, and everybody's worked very hard to try to do that. What we have is not an economic dispute with the city. We have a dispute over equity and fairness and who is going to carry what portion of the burden on these cuts. And as described by Mr. Bachman, because of timing on MOUs, public safety essentially has not experienced the compensation reductions that the general service employees have. To address that, we introduced the concept of a me-too clause. The idea that because all groups will be negotiating next spring, that's the best time to deal with the equity issue means that we, this year, begin to pay eight percent of our purs while public safety pays nothing, and if there is no agreement reached with public safety on picking up an equal portion of their purs next year, we continue to pay. That's the concept of the me-too. Bring us some equity in the process to recognize the efforts that these employees have put out. Recognize the approach they have taken. Now, in the negotiations themselves, we attempted to make a number of proposals to try to be creative about dealing with this problem. At one point, your representatives described that as the associations are jumping around, looking for creative solutions. We didn't believe we're jumping around, but I can assure you, your representatives did not jump around. They came in wanting us to pay eight percent of our purs, which amounted to an additional three percent compensation and in compensation, and never wavered from that position. There were some exchange of different ideas, but most of them were around the areas of additional reductions that were within the city's initial proposals, such as the elimination of ride share and some modifications on some of the leave benefits. We did discuss, and I think most groups were in agreement with, the additional 30 hours of paid leave that the city offered to help soften the blow, and that would be in conjunction with a year-end holiday closing. We felt that was a paramount concern because it's a big morale booster. Not that the 30 hours, you know, means that much one way or the other, but the impact on employees, a demonstration from the city, from the mayor, from the City Council, that they, you know, appreciate the efforts these people are putting forth, give them the opportunity to enjoy those holidays with their families and enjoy them a little more than they may have otherwise. So, we're not really looking at an issue of compensation, but the concern of the leaderships of these associations is the impact of a third straight year without seeing any equity across the board in who is absorbing these types of cuts and the impact that has on morale. And of course, there are a myriad of very advanced and conclusive studies that show there is a direct correlation between high morale and productivity, and it's difficult to expect the employees to continue to do what they're doing when their morale continues to drop. It's not a conscious concerted effort. It's a fact of human nature that if you don't feel like you're being treated fairly by your employer, it's hard to have the same level of enthusiasm for what you're doing. It's just a natural fact. So, we're looking to the City Council for leadership in trying to continue to resolve this issue. We believe it would be beneficial, based on the nature of the dispute and some confusion in the communication between the parties, that the involvement of a state mediator could be instrumental in bringing this to a successful collusion, conclusion. So, we'd ask you to consider that as a resolution. We don't have any new proposals to make, other than we believe that that involvement of a neutral to help the communication process could benefit both the employees and the city. We want to come out of this process with three agreements, not three impasses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bachman, at this time, would you like to provide any response?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. At this time, it is now appropriate for the City Council to recess the regular City Council meeting and reconvene into closed session if we desire. Does anybody wish to reconvene into closed session? Okay, seeing none. Okay, at this time, now appropriate for the City Council to make its final determination with the three associations. Mr. Tuie?
John, I agree with a lot of the stuff you said. The one thing I would have to respectfully disagree with you, if one of your three groups that you represent had a contract and were under contract and were guaranteed things under that contract, you would stand before us and say it's not right to take from them. They're under contract, the other two groups are not. And it's, we're in a difficult situation. The police and fire are on different schedules. I've been reading about all the stuff going on in the San Bernardino County, you know, in your negotiations with the CAO, Greg Deveraux, and watching how the different things have played out there with different groups coming up at different times, and it's similar type of problems that you're asking for, and I understand, and I, I understand Lydia's, you know, all the things you said, Lydia, Ed. I've known a lot of you for many years. We're under a very difficult situation. I don't disagree with you. Everyone, and I want to repeat, everyone should carry the same exact weight, and that would be my goal and intention when contracts do come up next year, that everyone's treated equally. And I don't know how else to say that. I will be attacked for that position, but it's a matter of fairness. Tonight, we take the same action against ourselves. It's the same thing coming up for department heads. Last year, I know not all of you are aware, department heads, besides getting a pay cut, they actually had to use vacation time during that week we were closed in Christmas time, so it was a double pay cut for them, where you were given furlough days. I know that doesn't always get publicized or announced out there, because no one, sometimes, sometimes people just don't want to hear it. I understand it impacts you personally, and the stuff that impacts you personally overshadows any other impacts. This is rough for us where we have employees disagreeing with each other and then disagreeing with the city, because I understand all of you have taken it on the chin and have taken the cuts and the cuts you've had to do for us. We're all dealing with less, and we're trying to get by. Like I've been stating at the meetings, and I said, and I'm glad Tom brought it up, just after the budget got signed, it was another $400,000 hit that we weren't anticipating that the state just took away. The redevelopment agency, which was part of that action too, which is going to be challenged, is a $2 million additional hit that we haven't even talked about, and it's not in this budget discussion. The loan is a question whether they're going to allow us to use the funds to pay the loans or if they're just going to take the money and let us pay the loan also. That's an additional 1.5 to 2 million dollar additional hit. And they do this. On top of all that, if the redevelopment agency is no longer here, that means 13 employees are being laid off. And those are real people, no different than your groups. Some of them are in all your different groups, I believe. I'm not sure how they're actually represented, but I mean, those are real facts. They were done, they're being done outside of this council chambers. It's being done at the state, and it's being done at the dark of night where people don't really understand what's being voted on up there, but it impacts us instantly. And it's concerning. I don't know where we get it. We're under contract with the public safety for those increases, and I'm telling you, your groups, and no different with you, if we were trying to, we can't take away a contract that's there, and that's there, they can voluntarily participate. That takes the union leaders at those groups to step up as you guys have done, and I greatly respect and I understand our differences, that you just want, make sure everyone's at the exact same table, getting the same cup of punch board. Not that someone has a full bag of groceries going home and you guys have a short load going home, and I greatly respect that. I've known many of you, like I said, for so many years, and this is very difficult. A lot of you were longtime customers at my store. You drove through my store for many years. I can't tell you how many, especially the maintenance groups. I've known some of you, like I said, for so many years. This is not a great time for us, but you do have my commitment, and I challenge you to come back next year, and I will hold my line, like I said, and make sure that this is equity for everybody in this organization. It's not fair this to do this on some, your contracts are up to do me-too. Next year, we are negotiating all this for everybody. It's a one-year deal. We can't impose more than one year, and we're all coming back to this table, and you're all going to be here again, and I, hopefully, we have a better news to report, but I want to thank all of you for the work you've done in the interim. And with being short staff, dealing with all the cuts we've had as a city because of impacts, we've had our, we believe retail sales are coming back, but again, they're creeping along. When they dropped off, they dropped off the side of the hill. Now they're coming back, and it's hard to climb back up that mountaintop, because we have five auto dealerships performing basically at zero, and that kills our auto mall, because the other ones are doing well, but five of the brands, all the American brands, don't sell really any cars, and that's killing us in there in our auto mall, and it hurts the other dealers. So, hopefully, that will all respond, but I will have to support this tonight, but I want, Mr. Adams, you hold us accountable, no different, because otherwise, our words worthless.
Any other comments? Let me just kind of echo what Mr. Tuie said. You know, as many years I've been on this council, we've always had the best staff, and I know we don't, you know, probably say it to you enough, but we do appreciate everything you do. This economy has taken a real full hold of the city and put us in bad situations. We, you know, our goal was not to lay anybody off, and we've gotten to that point. Hopefully, in the future, we won't have to do that either, but as I stated, I think, two meetings ago, every employee here is doing the job of one and a half employees because we've reduced through attrition, and there's nothing we can say that's going to make you feel better. The only thing I could say is that the equitable issue, I think, is strong with me-too. I, the me-too clause was, you know, something we discussed. We didn't see much benefit for one year, because the other contracts aren't even up in the first year. They don't start, they don't get up until July 1st, so. So, the only thing you can count on is the word of the people up here, but there have to, there has to be sacrifice across all employees. I agree with that, and that includes the council and our city management staff and everybody, so I don't like that. Nobody likes that, and that doesn't give any comfort to any employee, but the other alternative is we bankrupt the city and, you know, then we are really in chaos. So, we used to have a $30 million reserve. We're down to $5 million, so we've got to really tighten our belts, and this is unfortunately one of those belt tightening measures. With that, I don't think any of us are happy about it, but we're going to move, I'm going to move forward. Councilwoman Lane?
I just want to, you know, thank all of you for coming out here tonight, because, you know, your comments, they resonate with us, and they hit home, and we all you know, your comments, they resonate with us and they hit home, and we all understand that. We all know times are tough, you know, economically right now, and I think we've all had to make really hard decisions in our life, and just want to thank you guys for everything you do. You are appreciated from all of our seats, and you, you've made sacrifices, you work hard, you help our community, you keep our city functioning, you're trying to keep it so it's, you know, going to be functioning physically in the future, and that's deeply appreciated. I agree with the mayor, Mayor Proten, that, you know, we do need to keep things equitable, and everybody needs to be treated the same. So, with that, I am supporting this tonight.
Councilwoman Harpers.
As a resident, I just want to thank you. I see all the hard work with maintenance, I see all the hard work at City Hall, and again, I know that everybody is working double. All the cuts that are happening, it's not just here in West Covina, it's throughout, so it's not that we as a city are just picking on, on one group. I do agree with the me-too clause, that that needs to be equitable. It's very hard when your hands are tied with contracts. This is a really hard decision, but as a council member, we're elected to make hard decisions, and so I'm going to have to support.
Okay. We have three choices here. We can, actually, two choices. We can do these individually or as a group. Does anybody wish to take these individually?
Well, probably as a group.
As a group, okay. We will, with regards to the mid-management confidential and maintenance and crafts employees associations, the city council has the following options. Number one, impose the city's last best and final offer as recommended by city staff. Number two, agree with the association's last offer. Number three, refer the matter back to the city manager for mediation. Number four, grant the city's bargaining team additional authority and go back to the bargaining table. Number five, do nothing and allow the status quo to continue. Do I have a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion, impasse, impose the city's last best and final offer as recommended by city staff.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. That's for all three unions. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Adam 12, is the department head and city council benefits. City manager, do you have any comments?
I want to add that the department heads and myself felt it was important to lead by example, and as this report indicates, that the department heads are voluntarily making concessions that would affect across the board. It also affects the city council and myself, as I said.
Okay, do we have any comments from the council? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Move by Lane, second by Tui. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries 4-0. Okay, mayor, councilmember, commissioner reports. Anybody wish to report? Let me start by saying happy 4th of July, belated to anybody who wasn't there yesterday, but all these employees that left here today did a tremendous job. We had a huge crowd out there, and it was a very peaceful, very happy event. I think our residents appreciated the organization, the fireworks were very good, and, and there was money raised for a worthy charity, muscular dystrophy. So, thank you to the employees and our staff for putting that together, and thank you for the public for coming out. So, that's it for 4th of July. Any other comments?
I just want to say thank you to staff. What a great job that you do. Again, just to reiterate, it's really difficult these times that are going on. I'm thankful that we're not bankrupt. I'm thankful that people are keeping their jobs. Again, I know these are hard times, but there are jobs, so.
Mr. Tui.
Thanks again to staff.
I too want to thank you for all the city staff that was involved in the production of the 4th of July show. It went off very well, and also for all the employees, you know, and I know, Lydia, you can tell your group that if you read the paper every day in the Tribune, one city, all the cities are having budgetary problems. Most of the cities that have been quoted in the paper have laid off employees. We're trying to do our best, and I know sometimes it doesn't always get acknowledged in this type of setting, the way we're doing this, but it would just, is, it would be to me harder, because one of your coworkers would be getting let go. It's just a matter of which one that was here is going to be being let go. We're trying to make sure, so the pain is being felt across the board, so we can save as many potential jobs as possible, but like I said, it still is very difficult. And every day in the paper, as you read, there is bad news, and then, and that's just happening at the local level, then you get what's happening at the other levels, at the state government. Like I said, they have devastated city government. That's part of the problem I have with using a state arbitrator, that people that steal our money shouldn't decide how we should spend the money we have left. They've stolen all our money. They need to really have an arbitrator for the state legislature and have them between the federal government, because if the federal government treated the state government like they're treating us, they would be crying.
Any other comments? Okay, one other thing I wanted to ask the council. When we do presentations, you may have noticed, I don't do a lot of presentations, and that's not by design, it's just we don't have a whole lot going on as far as presentations, but what I would like to do is to, we always have one night a year that we bring in the Little Leagues, and kind of the champions of the leagues come in, and so I thought instead of doing them every meeting, we would pick one meeting, probably in September, and we'll call it our champions meeting, maybe do it at a little different venue. I was thinking of maybe out in the courtyard, if the weather is appropriate. And what I'd like to do is not only honor Little League champions, but business champions or resident champions, and I would like each of you to think of individuals that maybe are deserving of some recognition. I've got a friend who's done all 25 LA marathons. I thought that's something that we should recognize. He's a runner in the city. So, with that, if you can put those thoughts together, and if you have any champions, Lloyd Johnson, I know is our hero, what do they call it?
Hometown.
Hometown hero, yeah, for the year. So, he's going to be recognized at the county fair, but he's a good example of who we should recognize. So, if you could all submit some names, and we'll recognize those people with, at a ceremony. Mr. Tui.
I would agree there. I want to, I feel bad about this, but Steve Herford ran in every marathon, at LA Marathon. If you have ever seen the numbers, the Roman numerals that run through the marathon, those, Steve Herford did those every year from the beginning all the way through till he met a little bit larger guy who tends to eat a lot of fattening food, and I made Steve gain some poundage that he couldn't compete in marathons anymore, so I feel bad.
It's your fault.
I'm saying it's my fault. I'm taking full responsibility, but that's just not a funny note. On a sad note, one of our police officers lost their mother. Barbara Jean Bell is our West Covina Lieutenant Officer, Richard Bell. Richard's a local kid from the San Gabriel Valley. He was a football star at the University of Nebraska before he came on to our department eventually, and it is our thoughts and prayers go out to the Bell family, and if we can send our condolences to the family during the meeting in memory of Barbara Jean Bell.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All those in favor of adjournment in the memory of Barbara Jean Bell, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries 4-0.